Seven o'clock, welcome. We're gonna have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of all, with the great justice of our law.
We'll call please Ms. Garza.
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Woman Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. De Maria.
Here.
Mr. O'Handlon.
Here.
Mrs. Seabird.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Dawn.
Here.
Ms. Putro.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions and corrections to the agenda, Dr. Newman?
Consent agenda, personnel, ratification of personnel.
Thank you very much, sir. Next item on the agenda, superintendent's announcements and spotlights, Mrs. Radford.
Thank you Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman. Good evening to other members of the board, to our student representatives. Also, good evening to everyone that's here tonight. I'm very excited to stand before you with our lone spotlight for the evening, so if you all could join me down front, we'll go ahead and share that information. So tonight, I'm very honored to present one of our staff members for a recognition that she recently received. I'll go ahead and call her name and then we'll talk a little bit about why she's being recognized tonight. So Susan Mayo from Baldwin Elementary School is here, and she's been named a Project Lead the Way, Project Lead the Way Outstanding Teacher for 2019-2020. This distinction places her among a very small elite group of educators who have been recognized nationally for innovation in the classroom. Mrs. Mayo serves as the school's Project Lead the Way Coordinator and Coach, and has been a teacher for eighteen years here. She is passionate about championing STEM education along with the innovator skills of collaboration, communication, critical thinking, creativity, and problem-solving skills for students. Project Lead the Way is an innovative, project-based learning program that incorporates science, technology, engineering, and math. Project Lead the Way empowers students to develop and apply in-demand, transportable skills by exploring real-world challenges in an exciting and engaging way. Through pathways in computer science, engineering, and biomedical science, students not only learn technical skills, but they are also learning to solve problems, think critically and creatively, communicate and collaborate. Our students work through modules that consist of activities, a project, and a problem. They work through three main activities where they gain knowledge and skills, then they proceed to using these skills to investigate a meaningful project before finally transferring and applying skills in that real-world problem. Baldwin is in its third year of being a Project Lead the Way launch school. This year, students will be completing three modules in every grade, including coding modules, along with the engineering modules. According to Laura Goldzone, her principal, Ms. Mayo has led the school's implementation of Project Lead the Way from the beginning with professionalism and quality, and we extend a heartfelt congratulations to her on this national award. Congratulations. All right, good. Thank you. Those are our spotlights for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford, and congratulations, Ms. Mayo. Next up, Board Committee comments. Are there any Board Committee reports, I should say? Any reports down here?
No reports.
Okay, no reports. Moving right along. Board Member comments. We will start with our student members, and I'll start with Ms. Dawn tonight.
Thank you. It's crazy to think that we're already into the second part of our first quarter, and our district is settling into a comfortable and efficient routine. Today at Osborne, we hosted an extracurricular fair during extended learning time. Freshmen and seniors were able to view all the available clubs that our school has. The rejuvenation of club membership is always exciting to everyone involved. New friendships and mentoring experiences, along with the continuation of tradition and knowledge and self-motivation, it harbors a unique environment in the after-school atmosphere. It's impossible to advocate enough for our district's extraordinary programs, but whether you're interested in community service or mechanical engineering, there's a club for you. More information concerning clubs can be found on the Osborne website. In addition to extracurriculars, the core intention of ELT, Extended Learning Time, has recently become available to students. Following the release of interim, students now have the opportunity to travel to teachers to improve grades and review lessons. In comparison to last year's Eagle Block, there are many benefits. We, as a student body, are glad we're made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Putro.
Good evening, parents, students, and community members of Manassas City. We are now halfway through the first quarter of school, and there have already been so many great moments and accomplishments to highlight in our school system. Congratulations to the Osborne field hockey team for their big win over Hilton, and to the football team for their astounding win over Colgan last week. This Friday, the OHS football team will be playing a home game against Independence High School. Please come out and support our Eagles. Osborne's marching band took home five different awards at their Woodbridge Viking Invitational Competition at Woodbridge Senior High School on September fourteenth. They came home with first place in music, first place in marching, second place in auxiliary, second place in general tech, and first place in their overall class. Congratulations to all the band students. Your hard work and passion truly shows when you all play. Jenny Dean is having a movie night this Friday, September twenty-seventh. The Osborne High School inner rec club and the PTA will be helping out with the event. Children and parents are encouraged to attend. Hayden Elementary had a successful sandwich bar conference dinner last Thursday. The Hayden PTA did an amazing job planning and coordinating the event for their hard-working and special teachers during conference days. Thank you to all the Hayden families and business sponsors for their generous donations. Family Life Education Night will be held tomorrow night, September twenty-fifth, at Mayfield Intermediate, from seven to eight p.m. Family Life Education has been taught successfully in Manassas Public Schools since nineteen eighty-nine. Parents have the opportunity to become better acquainted with the curriculum. This event is welcome to all parents at MCPS. It is truly amazing to see all the well-rounded, humble, and talented students in our school system. Our students are driven and engaged inside and outside the classroom. Whether it's winning a football game, holding a generous sandwich bar for our staff, or the band bringing home first-place trophies, our students shine light and demonstrate excellence in all aspects. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Seabird.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to Mrs. Mayo on your recognition tonight. We're very proud of you. Today, I attended the VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference, along with Mr. O'Handlon and Mrs. Williams. This is where we go and we, as school board members, get professional development. And some of the things we heard about and talked about were school modernization, funding, and emerging issues. And some of the hot topics that are coming up for the legislative session are the biennium budget, early childhood programs, school safety, school modernization, labor relations, and mandates from the legislature. So if those topics interest you, please get involved, and that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams.
Mrs. Mayo, I want to say congratulations to you as well. Since you are one of the Project Lead the Way type into STEM science, I wanted to let you know, and if you all will also let all of your peers know, that the Education Foundation will be announcing their application for student grants soon. We also have somebody on our board who will help teachers write those grants if somebody's kind of nervous about doing that. So please encourage that. That will be coming out soon, and we'll let you know when that is. Well Suzanne covered what I was going to talk about, so thank you. That's all I have today. You guys have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. O'Handlon.
First, congratulations, Susan Mayo, and thank you for everything you do. You've done a wonderful job there. The two women who I accompanied today already said what I was going to say, but what I do want to add to that is, you know, we learned how to better advocate for us and for what's best for the children and the schools. But we would also like to hear from our residents what you want for your schools. So, you know, come advocate to us, and we can take it down to Richmond, because we, as someone said today, we don't know what we don't know. So, you know, tell us what needs you think we have in the school district, and we will carry that forward down to Richmond. Obviously, at the top of our list is always more funding for things we would love to do, but anyway, there are other issues that people are interested in that we would like to make sure we best represent you when we go down to Richmond in January to talk to our legislators. And we do have a breakfast coming up with some of them too, so. Anyway, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. De Maria.
Thank you, sir. Enough. All right, just enough. Yeah, I mean, that head, if the people aren't being, we'll sit next to you. The stuff from the state, like, I did not go today, but Mr. O'Handlon's right, we need to know more of what we need here, but the important thing is, the things that Mrs. Seabird listed off there is, to our state legislature, don't come up with any unfunded mandates. We are bone-dry as it is. Don't come up with that. We're doing just fine without you. Just pay the bills and keep your mouth shut. Or, if you're going to say something, pay for it. I usually talk about sports, and that was taken care of. Friday, home game against Independence. Volleyball and field hockey. Field hockey plays every night, it seems like. They're always out there, and they had a big win the other night. I had the pleasure of going to round today to watch dismissal. And all of the kids go to the auditorium, and there's a bunch of kids in there from preschool, just a little bit older than him, to fourth grade. And they were precious. They were quiet. They were orderly. It was unbelievable. I was never like that. My girls probably were, but I was never like that. And Ms. Wilson, I was just completely, completely impressed with how smoothly it went, how everybody knew what they were doing, kids, adults, everybody. Everybody got out of there smoothly, and it was just very, very impressive. I was glad I had the time to go over there and watch that, because I didn't go to that legislative thing. October nineteenth is the Osborne Alumni Reverse Raffle. If you want to win $10,000, come see me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we have a full agenda, so let me try to be brief. Ms. Mayo, congratulations. It's a tribute to yourself, but also to the city and all of our fine teachers. Several people have spoken about advocacy. My message would be very simple. You can't outsource it to us. A young lady spoke yesterday in New York, from, I think, Sweden, and what she spoke very passionately about, and she said, "We're watching." All elected leaders need to understand their constituency is watching and that you care. Because to Mr. De Maria's point, all too often, elected people go into Washington, or Richmond, or wherever, and do things that may or may not be in our best interest, because they don't know what they don't know, unless they hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you, and I'm just going to go on and keep embarrassing you, Ms. Mayo. Congratulations to you. It's well-deserved. Your colleagues support you and are around you day in and day out, and I've had the privilege of watching that for a very long time. It's well-deserved. I also wanted to just point out the importance of the skills that you're teaching our kids. I'm really happy that we're here tonight to talk about the academics and to hear from our principals and their representatives at schools. I see Mr. Flu-Graff back there. I have to say, you know, a different take on advocacy. I agree, like, we all have to mobilize around education and all of the underfunding and perhaps wrong decision-making being done. But I sit up here full of pride that we have student advocates, such as these two young ladies up here. They say everything we don't need to say. And as you would put at my glows and grows, I look forward to, you know, every journey in education is tough. All that's put on each of you that are here tonight to present to us is just difficult. And so, let's celebrate the glows, and let's talk about the grows, and let's just keep persevering together to get our kids what they need. Thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing from all of you.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. Congratulations again, had to say it. Sorry, Ms. De Maria. And Ms. Goldzone too, I mean, I know how proud you said she was, but thank you for your leadership and your support. I appreciate you being here. Next up on the agenda, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments? There's no one signed up, and I don't see anyone, so I will quickly move on. You have a comment? Sure? Okay, all right, let me check. Consent agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Handlon, second by Ms. Kiefer, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, seven-zero. Next item on the agenda is the discussion agenda, student achievement and accountability. We're going to start with Mr. Dave Lyon, I believe.
Good evening, Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman, members of the board. This evening is our first evening of a three-part series where we present our annual updates to the key performance indicators in our school, continuous school improvement plans, and it will culminate with the Central Office Admin Team updating you on the four-year strategic plan. As the principals present their updates to each of their goals and their KPIs, any KPI that has an SOL pass rate related to it, you'll see a difference this year. We've added two columns, so we can distinguish between the federal pass rate, which is every student succeeds, ESSA, and the state accreditation score. And I'll touch on that here in a second, and you can see the schedule there. The ESSA, the federal rate, is the pass rate we've always presented over the years. It is that, it is a pass rate. The federal formula does not give many exemptions or exceptions to the calculation, I'm sorry, there we go. They will back out students who fail and who have been with us less than fifty percent of the year, or students who have maybe failed the test and been in U.S. schools less than twelve months. That is basically it. Every, all the other scores are in that formula, and it's strictly pass over fail. The state accreditation rate is set by the Virginia State Assembly, General Assembly. And the accreditation rate, trying to get it all on there, the state accreditation rate takes into consideration more than just passing scores. The state of Virginia realizes that schools, and effective schools, not just a passing score in a test, that schools also can be affected by improving students, with student growth. And that is something that the Virginia accreditation formula includes. And because of that fact, it's not appropriate to refer to the state accreditation score as a pass rate. It's more of an index or a score. That formula includes credit for students who pass the test, but also students who failed the SOL test but showed growth from the last SOL test in reading and math. And the state has a set schedule, a range of scores that qualify for that growth credit. Students who fail the SOL test but did not meet the SOL growth requirement to be given credit for, they can also be given credit for their language proficiency test if they're an English learner, which is huge for us. Many of our students, a large percentage of our population, English is not their first language, and it takes five years, typically research shows, to become proficient in English. So another credit the state gives is for students in grades four through eight who failed the previous year in reading or math but passed the next year. If that happens, and they receive remediation, which they always do, their score counts twice. Their passing score counts twice. So when you add up all these credits, the state accreditation isn't a pass rate, it's a score, it's an index. But it accurately reflects the effectiveness of the school and what they're reaching out and doing with these students and their performance. SOL scores that are not included are students who, or transfer students who missed the first twenty days of school or twenty hours and did not pass the test, and also students who are English learners but have been with us for less than eleven semesters. So if there are any of those flags and they do not pass the SOL test, their scores do not get included in the formula. So I wanted to show you an example of what you'll see here this evening and in the next couple of board meetings. When a school has an SOL pass rate for reading or math, you'll see there will be an ESSA target and a state accreditation target in actual. They'll be distinctly different. The ESSA rate typically is much lower than the accreditation because of all the credits I just explained. And that state accreditation score reflects not just passing tests, but growth that students are making if they're not passing the test. One other item I'd like to mention, as you hear the principals present their plans and their updates, the schools identify their targets for their KPIs, and we listen and we debrief with them when they present their plans. And sometimes they do put a hundred percent as their KPI target, which is a challenge, because sometimes it's almost built-in filler. But one thing I wanted to point out, a lot of, many of those instances that you'll see, the hundred percent target is for parent conferences. And parent conferences not only happen face-to-face. Many of our parents work many jobs and can't get into the school, so many of our parent conferences also happen over the phone. And we give principals that latitude to include conferences, not only face-to-face, but over the phone, to ensure that they get contact with all of their parents. And with that, the last slide here, this shows you the new indicators that are included in accreditation from the state of Virginia. You can see those there. And that concludes my opening presentation.
One quick question. This is a general question. Do you think that the federal guidelines or the state guidelines are best for assessment, or do you find good things in both?
I prefer the state accreditation formula, because our schools are about more than just passing a test. When forty to fifty percent of our students are English learners, it's about growth. You know, we were forced, we're required, we're mandated to put an SOL test in front of a child who can't speak or read English. And in grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, that's tough. And so, when they don't, when they aren't able to pass that test, the federal formula doesn't give you any leniency, and it certainly doesn't include any growth credits either. So the state accreditation formula, the state accreditation score, in my opinion, reflects more accurately the effectiveness of the school and the work that's being done.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Great points. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Wilson will be next, I believe. Who's, actually, no. Baldwin. Oh, Ms. Goldzone will be next.
Can I give it?
Yeah. You can go twice.
Give him that folder.
Yeah. Welcome, Ms. Goldzone.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Chairman Williams, and Dr. Newman, and good evening to the rest of the board. It is my pleasure to present to you the achievement data and the program highlights for Baldwin Elementary School. I am joined tonight by a group of supportive and amazing teachers who are here to support our Susan Mayo and to stand with me as I present our data. Some of the highlights of our school year from 2018-19 included our first Lego League team. They were awarded the Core Values Award for the local competition and moved on to participate in the regional championships. The core values recognized include collaboration, communication, and teamwork, all of the things that we are emphasizing through our project-based learning, Project Lead the Way modules. We are proud that our efforts to teach these skills in our classrooms were recognized by outside adjudicators. In the spring of 2019, we enjoyed the first annual production of the Baldwin players. Due to the generosity of the Manassas Education Foundation, our students produced a musical using project-based learning strategies. I know many of you were able to come and see that. The production was titled "A Small Part of the World" and brought the audience along on a musical trip around the world. The production was presented to the whole school as the culminating event of a week celebrating the diversity of our community. Baldwin is committed to hands-on, inquiry-driven, facilitated learning. During the 18-19 school year, all students in kindergarten through fourth grade participated in Project Lead the Way modules to explore the engineering design process and make those cross-curricular connections. They were solving problems, they were working collaboratively. In just a minute, I will share with you data that's directly correlated to the work our students are doing during these project modules. When we engaged in some deep data analysis and a needs assessment, we identified our areas of strength and also areas that we want to focus on for school year 19-20. Our school-wide data trends identified through program evaluations indicate our areas of strength in language arts are connected to those lessons that integrate content, especially those that we teach during Project Lead the Way modules. For example, problem-solving, identifying the solution to the problem, determining a cause-and-effect relationship, and working with nonfiction text. Additionally, our data analysis helped us identify areas where we need to focus our instruction, including phonological awareness, sound-symbol relationships, and decoding skills. If students don't have the foundational skills to decode, it will prevent them from successfully reading and comprehending texts at higher levels. As we look to our achievement data for school year 18-19, I will share with you our plans to address these needs. Goal number one at Baldwin Elementary School is that all students will increase our academic achievement. As Mr. Lyon previewed for us, the data on this slide reports our ESSA, our federal pass rates, and our accreditation index scores. While we did not reach our target, comprehensive data analysis indicate growth in third-grade reading scores for some groups, including students identified as Hispanic, our girls, and our English-language learners. To address the area of focus identified in the previous slide and through our program evaluation, we have entered into a university partnership with the Training and Technical Assistance Center through George Mason University. T-TAC, as it's known, will help us provide ongoing professional development and support for teachers as we integrate explicit phonics instruction for all levels of readers. We are very encouraged by the growth and achievement Baldwin students have demonstrated in the area of math. Third and fourth grades both increased their SOL performance by twelve percentage points for all students. This growth was reflected in almost all reporting categories. We attribute this success to the development of number sense, kindergarten through fourth grade, using number talks on average of three times a week. Eighty percent of our students, kindergarten through second grade, passed the PALS benchmark or met the PALS benchmark in the spring. We know that those foundational skills are critical for students to become lifelong critical readers, and will pay particular attention this year to the development of phonological skills at the primary level. For school year 19-20, we are responding to our teachers who have asked for more support in the area of career growth and leadership opportunities. We've reorganized our leadership structures and meetings. In addition to the traditional leadership team, where each grade level has representation, we have developed three teams, or councils, as I like to call them, to address strategic planning, instructional development, and communication. Each teacher is a member of one of these groups. The goal is increasing a sense of agency, increased access to decision-making, transparency, and encouraging teacher voice in planning for our future. Parent engagement is important to us, and we believe our students will grow stronger with authentic homeschool relationships. Earlier this year, we asked parents to complete a survey that asked a few questions about opportunities to talk about their child's progress at school and opportunities to learn about how to help at home with academics. The survey went out to our community on social media platforms. We used Twitter, we used Facebook, and it also went out in English and Spanish. And about twenty-five percent of our parent population answered the survey. I was encouraged by that. This was the first time we had attempted to communicate with our community in this way, and we felt that we got... and we felt that we got a really good baseline on how to continue to grow in these areas. The results of the survey gave us the baseline data, and we're eager to design our programming to meet these identified needs. So coming up in October, we have an academic night planned, and we're going to shift some of the programming to focus on strategies and tips and tricks for helping to learn at home and being very explicit about that. We continue with our efforts to cultivate a culture of safety and by remaining aware of the things that we can all do to keep our building, our beautiful new building, in good working order. This requires us all to teach, to lead, and to follow best practices. The most important thing we can do for our kids is to model being safe, responsible, and respectful to each other and our environment. Speaking of respect, I'd like to talk with you a little bit about Respectful Rockets, which is sort of the umbrella program for how we address social-emotional learning and behavior at Baldwin Elementary School. We believe that teaching expected behaviors and consistently reinforcing those social-emotional behaviors that create the kind of learning environment where all children are celebrated is important. Some of the strategies that we're using include rocket cards for when we see a child, a student, going above and beyond expected behaviors. We give them a rocket card and they can trade that in for some type of an experience or an event. A lot of teachers will do like lunch bunch with their kids, or we try to keep the tangible items to a minimum and have that be an experiential reward, trying to build that intrinsic value for making those good choices. We also have the Reach for the Stars program in our cafeteria that monitors good behavior there. And we have character recognition breakfasts with our families. We have one in the morning, and it's probably the highlight of my month. Our first Rocket Breakfast is going to recognize students who've demonstrated respect and responsibility, and we invite them into the cafeteria as the bell rings and their families come in, and we enjoy a little treat in the morning and get to call their name. And these children have been nominated for this honor by their peers. Project Lead the Way, Ms. Radford did a very nice job of talking about Project Lead the Way and all of the things that we like to put forward during that instruction. It continues to be the primary opportunity for all students to engage deeply in project-based learning. Last year during 18-19, kindergarten and first grade joined us, joined the upper grades by engaging in two modules each. There's really nothing like watching kindergarten and first grade students engage in true collaboration. They are amazing. They will talk, they're just so creative and open to possibility. When I need to be reminded of the why, the why we do what we do, I only have to walk into a classroom and see this dynamic learning in action. I'm excited this year to say that all students will have three module experiences through Project Lead the Way, but in addition to that, each grade level is planning a project-based learning experience that has to do with language arts and social studies so that they're going to have a more balanced experience. So stay tuned. I hope I'll have an update for you on that. Thank you so much for your time and your attention and your support. It is my pleasure and pride to represent Baldwin Elementary School and Manassas City Schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Goldzone. I appreciate it. Before I ask for any comments, Councilwoman Michelle Davis-Junger is here, so thank you for being here. And Mr. Leroy Williams from the MEA is here, so thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. Are there any comments, questions to the left?
I had one, and I'll figure it out, and I'll ask Andrew. I mean, it was part of this, and I... Okay. What is chronic absenteeism?
Chronic absenteeism, we look at children who've missed more than 10% of the school year. So if we say we have 180 days of the school year, children who miss 18 days or more are considered chronically absent, chronically absent. So we try to keep that number below 10%.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you and your staff for the presentation. I know you put a lot of time into this. We appreciate the information.
We're proud of it. Thank you.
Next up, and I'm not going to listen to Mr. Marion, call Mr. Wilson next. Ms. Brooks is next, Hayden Elementary.
Good evening Chairman Williams, school board members, and Dr. Newman. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for continuing to entrust me to lead Hayden Elementary. I am truly enjoying my second year as a Hayden Hawk because we have such a wonderful staff and community and parents. Our school mission states that we strive to provide quality instruction to our students. Everyone in our community is important, and that we are committed to a strong home and school connection. We have a Title I, a school-wide Title I program, and we are proud to be the only school with a Spanish dual immersion program, which moved into third grade this school year. At the bottom of the slide, there is a link to our school quality profile where you'll find our test scores and more specific information about Hayden. In reviewing some information from last year, we determined some of our areas of strength include our Spanish dual immersion program where students are making gains in English and Spanish language acquisition. We have also strengthened the structure of our Hawk Block, which is one of our intervention vehicles for student support. We are extremely lucky to have the strong support of our Parent Teacher Association, whose membership continues to increase. Our students have opportunities to develop their leadership skills through participation in student groups such as the Safety Patrols, our Student Broadcast Team, our Recycling Club, and the LEGO Robotics Team. We are also proud of the strong teacher leadership in our building. Our teachers are always willing and ready to lead activities, clubs, events, and school initiatives. We are proud to have strong parental engagement with our families, and we are also excited about continuing our school-wide implementation of project-based learning. Our focus areas for this year include holding school-wide morning meetings, targeting reading and math instruction and intervention in small groups, and increasing student achievement in reading and math. We have started a school-wide campaign to improve student attendance. We also started working on our school-wide certification in Common Sense Media, which is a source that provides education and advocacy to educators and family to promote safe technology and media for children. Common Sense Media also gives guidance to help students, parents, and staff learn meaningful practices to online resources and social media participation. Our goal number one is to increase academic achievement in reading, math, and Virginia Studies. We continue to set attainable targets for both of our achievement and our accreditation rates. We will also increase our ESOL pass rate and percent of students who pass the Spring PALS Phonological Awareness Literacy Screening Benchmark. We will use SOL data to provide specific instruction as well as ongoing professional development to our staff. We will continue to provide identified students with intervention in core content areas, which is embedded in our master schedule. Our goal number two is to increase, oops, sorry, to increase and strengthen internal and external communication systems. We will maintain the frequency of our school-to-community communication, increase the frequency of teacher-to-parent communication, and increase administrator-to-staff communication. We will aspire to increase the percentage of parents who are satisfied with school-to-home communication and work to increase the percentage of parents who participate in at least one parent-teacher conference this year. We are using multiple modes of communication that include phone, email, websites, applications, texts, and paper flyers to inform parents. The principal is providing weekly communication, and staff members will continuously make every attempt to contact parents for conferences. Staff, parents, and student surveys will again be administered this year, and our wonderful PTA has a well-rounded calendar of events planned. Our goal number three is to increase staff engagement and teacher retention. We plan to continue high achievement and support our staff to increase that rate. This includes supports for our new teachers via our teacher mentorship program. Through our professional learning community, the Hayden Leadership Team uses a shared leadership model, which empowers team leaders to help make important decisions for school improvement. There are multiple leadership opportunities for staff members, and we regularly seek verbal and written feedback. We will continue to have lively and purposeful staff meetings for discussions and to deepen our professional learning. We will also use our staff survey information to make school improvements. Our goal number four is to continue to maintain a safe and orderly school. We will maintain no recurring findings on our quarterly building inspections, and we will fiscally utilize our school budget to meet the needs of our students. We will conduct proactive walkthroughs around the building, hold monthly meetings, review school inspection reports, and continue to conduct all required drills throughout the school year. We will continue to use the Positive Behavioral Implementation and Supports Framework to maximize the selection and use of prevention and intervention practices that support the academic, social, emotional, and behavioral competence of all students. One of our new strategies is conducting daily morning meetings in each homeroom class. In addition to the district professional development on conscious classroom management, our PBIS team is conducting a book study on the resource. We plan to start a positive referral, behavior referral program, which will capture model student behavior, and we will regularly remind students to be respectful, responsible, and safe on our daily morning show. We conducted bus expectation lessons utilizing a real MCPS school bus, and we will continue to inform parents about the PBIS framework and supports. Hayden will continue to broaden and strengthen our school-wide implementation of project-based learning. Last year, we held 15 of what we call Think Tank Sessions on certain Friday mornings at 8:00 a.m. These sessions allow for staff members to seek and share ideas for class projects. To date, approximately 70% of our teachers have participated in project-based learning professional development. Every grade level completed at least one project last year, and members of our PBL leadership team have participated in advanced professional development. This year, we are excited about our PBL Learning Fairs, in which we will invite you all and the community to see the great projects our students have been working on. We will continue to hold our Think Tank Sessions. The PBL leadership team will deeply reflect on our school practices. We do that often during the Think Tank Sessions, and we are eager to participate in more advanced project-based learning professional development. We will also continue to train new teachers on project-based learning and support the currently trained teachers and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Questions or comments? Questions, comments?
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
I guess I didn't answer it well.
Go for it.
Ms. Brooks, hi. Thank you for your presentation. On goal number one for the Virginia Studies SOL pass rate, you had a target of 70 and the actual was 82. Do you, can you attribute that to something specific or just...
Can you repeat that? The reading goal or the math?
Goal number one, Virginia Studies, and the last...
Oh, Virginia Studies.
The pass rate, the target was 70, and your actual was 82.
That was our fourth grade team. Besides it being a strong team, they used a lot of comprehension supports and activities for students. And in addition, that fourth grade team, they are really excited about teaching Virginia Studies, and you can see that when you go in the room. I think excitement is definitely one thing. They also used a lot of primary sources and a variety of texts to help teach those standards.
And do we have all those same resources in place this year?
Yes, ma'am.
But our target is 75?
Yes.
New forward. Okay, new year. Okay.
That can be adjusted.
Well, I think, Dr. Newman, you want to weigh in?
Every year is a new year, so you get a new group of students, and I think the 75 is a good baseline for them and for our staff.
Thank you for that little word coming from... Okay.
I think to clarify what the superintendent's saying, we've had a lot of discussions of metrics that are offside to that point. Just because we've exceeded a goal doesn't mean we should, while we'd like to raise the bar, we're continuing to make incredible progress. By the same token, if we fail to meet an objective, we're not going to hold the bar low. We're going to continue to strive for that.
Correct. Any other comments to my left? Well, thank you very much, and thank your staff for the great presentation. We appreciate it. Now, finally, Mr. Wilson, Round Elementary. Mr. Marion, you have any questions?
Not yet. I'm going to think of something, though.
Good evening Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman, members of the board. I want to thank you for having me out this evening to discuss an update to our continuous school improvement plan. So who are we? What defines us at Round Elementary? To say that plainly, when I get asked that question, we are a family. And that family goes well beyond our doors. That family includes our entire school community, and that family extends to all of Manassas City. I see a little family photo, our immediate family right there. At Round Elementary, we had a little silly staff pic there that I was proud of that I wanted to put in the slide. And, you know, when we think about family and we think about why our family comes together every day to serve our students, we discussed that a lot over the past few years. You know, what's our vision? What are we here for? And I think a big part of my job as principal is to help simplify things. And, you know, ultimately, there's really only one criteria that we base all of our decisions on, the way we serve our students, and that criteria is, you know, what would we want for our children? And whether you're a parent or whether you have a nephew that's close to you, or there's some child in your life that's close to you, you can make that connection. And I'm a new father myself. I have a year-and-a-half-year-old, and it's even, I can see her face, you know, and I can think about, you know, what do I want for her? What do I want for my children? And the answer to that is I want the best, you know? I want the ideal. We're striving for the ideal. So you see that right there in our vision. We're very proud of that. That really is meaningful to us. Together, the entire school community, that includes everybody as a stakeholder in our school, will create the ideal environment for teaching and learning. And we focus on the environment because everything we say, everything we do, the way we talk to each other, the way we treat our students, the way we serve our students, the way we design intervention, all of that impacts the environment. And it's such a sensitive thing in a school, and it's just something that we really rally around as a staff and make sure we concentrate on, all the little things that build that ideal environment. So the only problem with the ideal environment is that word "ideal" is subjective. That needs to be defined. So that's the first thing we did as a staff this year, is we worked to define that. So I posed the question, you know, what does the ideal environment look like, sound like, and feel like? And they didn't know it at the time, but what they were defining was our mission statement. Because if we're going to deliver the ideal environment, then we have to talk about what that looks like day to day. So our mission is our heartbeat, it's our identity, it's alive and in action every day. You see words like "safe," "supportive," "student-centered." That's the environment we want to provide. The learning experience is our meaningful, challenging, engaging, and enjoyable, and our culture in our school is going to be one of positivity, accountability, and respect for all. I'm most proud of that because those words aren't coming from me. Those words are coming from my staff. So I'm really proud of that, and so are they. And one thing that you see in the picture is Round is family, hashtag Round is family. That's something we're investing in as well, really trying to rally our school community around, helping us tell our story about what family looks like at Round Elementary. We are a school-wide Title I program and you'll see our school quality profile is linked right there in the slide. So when reflecting on our data and doing an inventory, doing a needs assessment, we identified some specific strengths and some specific areas that we were going to, that we're going to focus on this year. Student achievement in mathematics and history and social sciences, we're really proud of our student achievement in that area, definitely a strength we look to build off of. Extracurricular involvement and opportunities, again, when we talk about the environment, that includes outside of the classroom as well. So I'm a big believer, if we can connect our students now to school, then that'll impact their life beyond the K-12 system. And we're trying to build an unbreakable connection to school for all students, kindergarten through fourth grade. So we're looking forward to building upon these opportunities that we offer, but we currently offer eight clubs and sports to our students. And we have a committee that's rallying around that work, looking at the opportunities we offer, making sure we have opportunities for all students at their interest level. Student leadership, another big point of pride for us, over half of the fourth grade students applied to be a safety patrol and we made it happen. So, you know, you'll see, Mr. Demary, Dr. Newman, you saw today, we have a lot of safety patrols invested in themselves as leaders and that's something we're really proud about. Broadcast program, you know, getting the students on, on TV every morning and making sure they have a chance to lead, lead the student body and also our SCA is something we're really proud of. Really, really a point of pride is just our school community in general, specifically our, our PTO events and activities always have a great turnout when, you know, when you talk about families, sometimes it just, certain things feel like family and the bike rodeo this past month was one of those events. People just come out, build community, and have a good time. So also concentrating on area of strength, but also always an area of growth is communication for us all. Focus areas next year, or this year, excuse me, we have the luxury of a very clear focus on reading instruction. In our, doing our needs assessment, we identified phonological awareness, story elements and comprehension as those specific target areas within reading instruction. To address those target areas, one thing we're doing is really offering some targeted professional development to our staff, specifically an explicit phonics instruction and guided reading instruction. Really investing in our PLC process, professional learning communities, really trying to integrate as many structures as possible that really make our time in teams, in teacher teams, as meaningful and valuable as possible when decisions and actions are rooted in the data. With that in mind, we're really looking to invest in ourselves. Last year, we, we concentrated a lot on building a growth mindset with our students in the classroom. And this year, we're transitioning and making sure that we're modeling that as well. So engaging in instructional coaching opportunities where we're investing in ourselves to get better each and every day. So goal one, you'll see our clear focus is reading. Our clear focus is reading instruction. We did not meet our target in that area. You will see that our students made significant growth and demonstrated a lot of growth, which we're, we definitely want to celebrate, but talked a little bit more, talked a little bit about those three focus areas and really addressing our professional development to address those. Mathematics this past year was, was a strength for us. We exceeded our target and you see we made a significant or demonstrated significant growth as reflected in that state accreditation score as well. So that's something we're very proud of. So drilling down a little deeper into the action we're taking on that data, we did this comprehensive K-4 needs assessment and really identified what our needs were across the board. So not just looking at one individual grade level, but looking K-4, what are the patterns we're seeing, what are the needs that are demonstrated in our data across the board? So we identified those three specific focus areas, like I said, phonological awareness, story elements, and comprehension. And we identified within that, we drilled down deeper into their data, into our data, and recognize the essential skills that are necessary for students to demonstrate mastery in those focus areas. So with that in mind, the teachers are currently unpacking those, those standards and really identifying what does mastery look like for each one of those essentials? And that's really the crux of the PLC work that I discussed, really making it meaningful. That's another theme of ours as a school, is making sure we're not doing anything just to do it, we're really making it meaningful and making sure it impacts student achievement. And then what's beautiful about this is our collaboration, true collaboration in PLCs is, is driving the work and intervention. So it's driving all the planning, driving all the identification process and RTI or Response Intervention Plan. And then I talked a little bit already about targeted professional development. Goal two, you know, we talked about building the ideal environment and the ideal school climate, that starts with the adults. So that's something that we're concentrating on this year is really doing some team building and, and working on making sure we have a system for staff recognition with our staff. So one thing that we're doing month to month at every faculty meeting is that we have this Ideal Environment Award and we started with our custodial team on a short summer. The custodial team just went above and beyond to make sure we had an outstanding building to open up the school year. And so they were the first to receive the Ideal Environment Award. And then at the next staff meeting, they passed that on. So the only criteria there is that it's passed on staff to staff and recognizing the people in our building that are going above and beyond to build that ideal environment that we talked about. Royal Raccoon, I'll talk a little bit on the PBIS slide, but that's just a systematic way to recognize, you know, other staff members that are going above and beyond. Shared leadership, again, you know, leadership team is something we invest in throughout the year, but it's really important to me that there's shared decision-making and distributed leadership within the building, really building capacity within our teachers to serve as leaders within the building. Talked a lot about those structures with PLCs. And then, again, really trying to make committee work meaningful. The teachers are really looking at their specific grade level and drilling down deep into their data and owning it. And then one thing we're going to do with some committees this year is look at the vertical articulation piece. So given those essential skills that we've identified in those deficit areas, we're going to make sure that we're addressing those needs across the board. So like I said, communication is always an ongoing area that we're looking to improve upon. And, and with that in mind, really trying to build that homeschool connection, you know, that, that ideal environment goes well beyond our doors and it's really important to us that we're building that connection with our parents and school community. So one way we're doing that is with our weekly auto calls every Sunday night at 6:30. Our, our parents and guardians receive an update from me with highlights from the past week and, and a review of upcoming events and activities the next week. We've got a really good feedback on that process. Monthly newsletters, obviously, that's something we do. Talked about investing in social media. I'll admit it's a transition for me personally. I'm like an old man when it comes to social media, just not something I'm, I'm comfortable with, but luckily I got a lot of folks in the building that are really adept at it and, and sharing our message and making sure we're telling our story the right way. And again, the, the rally cry here is that everybody can engage with that hashtag when you experience something or see something, whether it's in our building or outside our building, if it's something you're proud of that represents Round and the, and the family we are, go ahead and hashtag us, that Round is Family. We're putting together, we're not doing any committees unless they're meaningful. And we're, one thing that's extremely meaningful is a parent engagement committee with parents involved on that committee to really review how we communicate, what we're doing and what we can improve on as far as engaging our parents. A big part of that committee work will be the updating the PEPP program, so parents as educational partners, huge feather in our cap and something we want to build upon. And then what we, we've invested in some resources that, that are, we have like a mini parent resource center within our school that we're trying to expand upon that offers a couple different resources for parents to understand how they can best extend learning at home. And then finally, goal four, obviously, an ideal environment is one that's safe and efficient. So, you know, just similar to what the other principals talked about, just really being proactive, making sure we're being proactive about safety. And then also the budget planning and management process, just really want to be proactive and preventative when it comes to safety and being efficient with, with how we're planning for and utilizing the budget. PBIS, our tenants at Round Elementary are, they supply student staff, building guests, everybody that enters the building. We're going to be a school that's safe, we're going to see responsibility, and we're going to see respect. And so when those are the expectations that we set, it's very important that we systematically reinforce those. The exciting part is that's not just happening with our students, it's also happening with our staff. So I actually conveniently always carry my, my tickets here, which Rocky's Rewards, Rocky Raccoon is our, our mascot. Thank you. And, you know, this is the system that teachers engage with students and all staff engages with students on. So if they see an example of safety, responsibility, or respect, they circle which one applies. They have a brief meeting with the student, they tell them specifically why they're being recognized. That student has the opportunity to see another staff member that they have a relationship with. The important piece of that is they get a chance to articulate why they were recognized, which is, you know, helps them retain how they can perpetuate that, that level of safety, responsibility, or respect. And then they, they, we have a monthly raffle. And then there's a quarterly, for any student that receives 10 of these within a given quarter, there's a quarterly celebration, similar to what Ms. Goldzone talked about, really want to invest in the experience, not the tangible rewards. And one thing tangible that we are doing is we're doing these swag tags where they get a chance to kind of represent and wear on their backpack that they, that they earned a given swag tag for good behavior. So this year, something new, we're doing the same thing for staff. So if a staff member sees another staff member demonstrating safety, responsibility, or respect, not really just meeting the expectations of, of any employee, but really going above and beyond in those areas, we ask that they take a time to recognize their colleague. Same process goes into effect where they get a chance to share that with one of the administrators. We sign off and then they go in, it goes in a monthly raffle that we do at every faculty meeting. Restorative practices, that's just a compliment to PBIS. Basically, without over explaining, it's really just an approach to student discipline that really highlights allowing students to take ownership for their actions, understand how their actions impacted others, whether that be a teacher or another student, and then really gives them the opportunity to repair that relationship before re-entering the classroom. Very important. Project-based learning, just really excited about where we're at with project-based learning. The way we've invested in this is, is, you know, we're really focusing on those gold standard, gold standard elements that are outlined within project-based learning. And so we want to see those elements in all instruction. So yes, we're encouraging the projects and those experience, those authentic experiences for our students, but we want to see those components, those elements in all instruction. That's really important. So as we do instructional walkthroughs, that's something we look for and reinforce with our staff. We do have 13 new staff members that were just recently trained this past June, really proud about that. We do have a newly formed PBL leadership team which took ownership for the last faculty meeting in September. Dr. Newman was invited over to attend. We appreciate you coming by to see us. And we're really reframing the, why, you know, why we're investing in this work. And the staff is really, you know, gone, gone all in and it's something I'm really proud about. This year, our focus is to add a gold standard teaching practice to those elements we've already focused on, and that's scaffolding. You know, when we set the bar high for our students, it requires differentiation and scaffolding to make sure that every student gets to and through the bar, and that's something we're focusing on this year. So all staff will be trained in PBL 101 by the beginning of next school year. And what we're looking for is an instructional culture that really has a full integration of PBL elements throughout all instruction. Really want to thank you for allowing me to come out today and share that update and appreciate everything you guys do to support us moving one step closer to the ideal environment.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Can visitors get Royal Raccoons? Because I didn't get one today, did you?
Do you feel you went above and beyond?
No, no, no. It's too late, my brother. It's too late. No, don't.
I have that.
Make them earn them next time.
I will, I will. I'll keep that in mind next time.
Mr. O'Hanlon?
Mr. Wilson, thank you for your presentation. I see your average attendance at a PTO meeting is three.
Yeah, that does a
And let me just comment on it, it's impossible for you to carry off the events I've seen there with three people attending meetings, so they must be more.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up.
What you can do is tie in some of those events to the meetings and count those hundreds of people, hold a meeting, and say, and let the PTO talk since it's their event.
Sure.
Call it a meeting.
Yeah, I'm really glad, I'm really glad you brought that up because we have a great turnout at the events, but we struggled to, to get folks in the door for our monthly PTO meetings. And that, that three is just parents, it doesn't represent myself, the PTO president and the board. I'm proud to say this
But you're going to kill those three people. If three people are doing everything I see.
I'm proud to say at our first PTO meeting earlier this month, we had 18. So that's one important detail I forgot to mention, that we are moving in the right direction and really trying to make, one thing we did last year and want to continue with is really, like you said, utilizing that forum to, to really present something, you know, at, at the school-based level that parents really want to come out to, to be a part of and, and then, so we're trying to make that a crux of the meetings to sustain that, so, but thank you for mentioning that.
Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Wilson, for a great presentation and thank you, your staff as well. And next up, Weems Elementary School, Dr. Zella Jones.
Good evening, Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman, and school board members. I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about Weems Elementary School. Our school mission statement is, we will build a foundation of learning to help us grow so we can achieve and show what we know. We are a Title I, school-wide Title I school. Our talents and gifts program is going into year seven. Students will complete two 13-week clusters based on their interests. Their first cluster started on September 11th. Students will learn about their interests through activities, through experts coming in to speak, and they will create an ending product to show what they have learned. And in the winter, we will have a walkthrough and they'll visit each other's clusters. And in the spring, we will have a TEG fair and invite parents and the communities. The second grade team communicated with the Navy SEALs and they sent a flag with their signatures back to the students. We were also designated as a Purple Star School. Weems received three grants from Manassas City Education Foundation for Osmo, robotics, and STEM materials. The playground opportunities onto the blacktop surfaces have finally been completed and students are enjoying a peace path, a map of the United States, a beanbag game, a compass rose, hopstotch, four squares, and beanbags at recess. The link for the school quality profile is provided for your viewing. We started the year with PBI lessons, teaching that to the students for the first two weeks of school. Students are rewarded with paws and they get those for various behaviors. TEG continues to be an area of strength. Many parents expressed their pleasure with the program at the TEG lawn that was held in the spring. Seven staff members, including the principal and assistant principal, attended Confort in July to continue to learn the best practices with the school-wide enrichment model and to how we can help students gain talent and show their gifts when they are participating in the TEG program. Students are also being exposed to PBL projects where they are solving authentic, real-life problems based on SOL standards. We feel that both TEG and PBL allows our students to excel in multiple ways. We successfully combined our academic and behavior intervention into one meeting this past school year because we want to be able to address the whole child. Teachers are planning daily to coordinate all the learning activities to ensure student success. Our fourth grade team increased their SOL math score by five points. Teachers credit small group instruction for some of the success. Parents continue to attend activities such as family picnic, the graduation ceremonies, and PTO activities. While we have strength in many areas, we're discussing our course of action to raise SOL scores for third and fourth grade reading and third grade math. The coaches will be utilized for coaching sessions, we will have the fourth grade share what they did for fourth grade math, and we look forward to using new resources. We continue to encourage implementation of PBL projects and we want all teachers to be trained by June 2020. Our first goal is dealing with opportunities to increase reading and math achievement. Our reading and math scores did not reach our targets of 78 and 87%. Fourth grade math scores rose by five points, but third grade scores dropped. Our state accreditation scores were much closer to the targets and we wish those were the were the only ones showing, but they're not. We are analyzing data, and we discuss how to bring up scores for our subgroups. We will focus on guided reading, shared reading, vocabulary development, small group instruction, math workshops, and coaching cycles. We also have all-grade levels participating in data meetings every week so we can look at our data, analyze it, and make a plan for higher scores and for higher achievement for our students. Weems is committed to finding and retaining qualified teachers. The retention rate was 84 percent, with several teachers leaving to marriage and relocation, spouse promotions, and staying home with children. Weems elected to have a slow start when PBL was introduced. Several teachers were trained in the summer, and additional teachers will be trained in October going to Fredericksburg, Virginia. All teachers in grade levels will complete at least one PBL project this school year. When looking at our paws, 100 percent of classes met the paws 100 at least four times during the school year. When students get 100 paws, they can select a special activity, which may include eating lunch in the classroom, a pajama day, bring a stuffed animal to school. So anyway, all the classes were successful in meeting that goal. Students also receive paws for wearing their uniforms, for being on time to school, for walking the hallways appropriately, for being kind to others, and for being on task and learning each day. Weems invites business owners and speakers to come in for TED clusters and for our Career Day. We also developed a partnership with Aviation Maintenance. They donate school supplies throughout the year and donated four I-PAS to fourth-grade students at the end of the year. All of our parents participate in at least one parent-teacher conference over the school year. We make a hard push for parents to come to the first parent-teacher conferences, and we just had conferences last week, and several teachers came up to me and said, "I had 20 of 21 parents. I had 20 of 22 parents." But we also have those parents, we also consider it a success when they come to, when they have phone conferences, IP meetings, and child study meetings, and when they come in for special events, and we can pull them to the side to talk about their child. Teachers are working hard to connect with our students because we know relationships help the entire school community. Our target for the actual budget was 98 percent, and we're at 86.5 percent. I created the school budget in January without knowing the amount of Title I funds available to the school. I use Title I funds to purchase many teacher resources and to send them to professional development and for supplies instead of using local funds. Faculty, staff, and the Manassas City maintenance work hard to keep our school safe. The only recurring finding for us, we had one, was the use of air fresheners. The policy has been shared with the staff, and they've been asked not to use them. When we look at our PBIS program, we're very proud of it. Teachers receive training on the PBIS expectations and procedures at the beginning of the school year. The PBI lessons were taught over the first two weeks of school. The PBI committee meets monthly to monitor our program and to see how it's working. Students receive recognition for good behavior through our bucket fillers, and every class nominates two people every quarter for the bucket fillers. We have our paws, and we have our golden spork, which is used in the cafeteria for appropriate behavior. Teachers record observations when students make poor choices. Teachers also use a clip-down chart in their classrooms where all students start on Ready to Learn. They can clip up to show them pride for being a role model, or they can clip down to think about it, cool down and reflect, and parent contact. We are excited about PBL this year, and we are making progress. There is a PBL focus every month at the faculty meeting. Teachers hear about the gold standards, and they have examples, and we ask them to use them not only in PBL projects, but also in their classroom. Kindergarten is our star PBL grade, and they completed four projects last school year. All-grade levels are now planning PBL projects for the 2019-20 school year, and I will provide additional time for teachers to plan these projects, and we will share our successes at our faculty meetings. Weems Elementary believes we believe in ourselves, we believe in each other, we believe in success, and we believe in Weems Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any comments or questions to the left? Mr. Albert.
Dr. Zella, just have one, and maybe Mr. Lyons could also help out. I think it was Slide 4, said 100 percent of the subgroups made their progress, yet the numbers were low. Is that because when compared to the year before, 100 percent of the subgroups showed improvement, just not meeting what the federal or state standard is?
Yes, when you look at the state standard, like everyone, you have a target that you reached, and they reached the target. So we were at number one for the state accreditation, so that's why I put 100 percent met those targets, yes.
Thank you.
Comments, questions to the left? To the right? Well, thank you, Dr. Jones, for a great presentation, and your staff for doing such a good job. And with that, I think we are done for the evening. So may I have the motion, please?
Move to adjourn, sir.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Demery. Can you have two seconds?
Yes.
Second by Ms. Seberg and Ms. Kiefer to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have at 7-0, we are adjourned.